So. All right. We'll call it tonight's meeting with Lloyd City Council Board. Manny, would you take a roll call, please?
Todd, Edel.
Here.
Tony Diglin.
Yes.
Jamie Meyer. Matt Cotty.
Here.
Liam Smith.
Present.
Andrew Grayblond.
Present.
Thank you. It's standing invitation, quite a pleasure. Heavenly Father, we come to you for guidance and the blessing of our community and our council with our law enforcement as they continue to protect us in our local community and also the militaries that protect us around the world. You name it, pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony, do you have anything?
No, sir. Thank you.
I agree. Todd, no. I don't have anything there. Katie, do you have anything?
A point, personal. Anyway, I gave the nation a copy to hand out this visit which I'm going to have. The big boy vocal money from the Union Pacific. Two years ago, they made a circuit for the anniversary of the river and it's going to be doing that again will be in Swine and Wilston, Elsworth. Schedule on it, make it to your attention. That's quite exciting to see coming in town, made a pound of steel of six hundred miles an hour. But it certainly hardly ever seen, and I'll give it to the kids too, and I was making them think, because you know, how many kids are going to get to see this? Anyway, it's quite exciting to see. They'll be in the paper and on the radio, I hope.
Thank you. Katie, do you have anything?
No, I'm sure not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jason, we'll turn the meeting over to you.
All right. Couple, couple of different updates today. The solar project, I asked Rick for an update on that, so they have been working on it. They, we've got the interconnection, so one of the things we're tackling is the interconnection between our system and the solar farm. So we're going to utilize, and you might remember this from the presentation, I think called Clear Sky. It's Clear Sky for a reason, because there's not a lot of stuff up in the sky, but a typical interconnection type system may have four to six different power poles leading into our grid, you know, so have a, some sort of a clothing device, transformer, reclosure, and an air brake, and all sorts of redundancies. And what we're looking at is just, it's called an interconnection in a box. So it'll be like a big looking transformer type thing that's all within one, one unit on the ground, and it's a lot cleaner, easier to service, and eliminates, you know, you may only have one or two poles leading into the system versus the six. So that's good. They met with the SPP aggregation study and generator interconnection group. So again, since we're in the market, we gotta get all these things cleared, confirm that there are no registration required. Again, it's a pretty small system, so they really, you know, they're dropping the bucket for them. If you remember the SPP name, which we all learned about, you know, four months ago, that's the same group. They do a scheduled meeting with Sunflower to clear the affected, affected system notice. So again, just another thing, Sunflower is kind of the local high voltage line that we get our power through for our power contracts. So they're clearing all those. All the onsite work for the studies and survey have been completed. So one of the things that they had to do was an ALTA survey. So it's, it's really just a, you know, it's an extremely high-end survey. I mean, it's title work, legal work, obviously topo, environmental, all sorts of stuff, I guess, environmental. But they did do an environmental survey as well. They also got soil survey and geotechnical. They sent the final reports any, any moment right now. They aren't expecting any issues. In fact, I think I told you that we have about nine of their test posts get stuck in the ground. So the soil should be, lots of friction there, I guess. So shouldn't want to lift down. That's really one thing that they're looking for is uplift, obviously, if a big windstorm comes through. Yeah, so this is Rick's verbal confirmation from engineers, all the studies look good or in line with the initial estimate. So nothing there. The, the current estimate for start of construction is now September. So again, if you remember, obviously hinging on materials and really the transformer, I think we can concur with that based on, remember a month or so ago, we kind of had to buy some refurbished transformers just to increase our stock because the regular, the new ones are so backordered. But they feel like start construction in September and completion would be January. Again, like construction probably almost starting before the transformers here, so it'd really be matter switching it off when that transformer's here. So it could be December, it could be February, you know, that type of thing. But it's all fine and good. Obviously, we want to hear as fast as possible. But on the flip side, you know, our contract won't start till it's, it's certificate of completion. So it really doesn't matter. The nice thing is it'll be up and going when we're really in the heat of the summer. And that's when it's really going to make the big difference. So, so anyway, so that was my, my request to him is just give us an update. I know he's been doing stuff. We keep getting trickles here and there. You know, cost increases have gone up, but it won't affect our PPA or anything. You know, they're, they're looking at savings in other ways. And I'm, yeah, I'm looking forward to September so we can get it to ground. So if anybody has any questions or has anything they want to ask Rick or whatever, just feel free to email me. He's really easy to get ahold of and really easy to work with. But it is what it is. Kind of like everything's taking time. So North Walnut update. We had a meeting with, right, a meeting with Stewart and then Manny and I had a meeting with Bonding Services, the company that we're going to be utilizing for it end of last week. The rates, everything are looking good. Obviously, they keep having flowing, but we feel really good about where they're at. We're approaching all-time lows again. And I think regardless of whether we go into inflationary period or, you know, right now, we're kind of just in a value add increase type period right now. Commodities are scarce. I don't really know if that's inflation or just the way the market is right now. But there's always going to be a flight to safety. And they said that there's so few Dons being sold right now. Or not few, but the market is just so unsaturated. So everybody's, they'll, they'll basically pay, you know, whatever rate to get it, you know, because again, a lot of these places have a certain mix in their investment portfolio that they have to have munis. And when there's just not as munis, as many munis out there right now, you know, they'll, they'll pay a premium, and that's a good thing for us in the sense that they won't charge a lot of rate. So we, he sees that holding on and, and a community like us, you know, we had a really good bond rating last time. They can project us to probably have, you know, an even better bond rating this time. But in talking to Stewart on the design engineering side of things, they have gotten most of the surveying done. They're obviously more surveying on the Eighth Street portion. They feel that the goal, and they still feel like they're on time for all this, would be for a pre-Christmas, I guess, bid letting. So sometime before Christmas in December. Then that's out for about 30 days is usually the bid window. So then let me get those back on the first of February theoretically, right before first of February, which would be just perfect for, I think, our second meeting in February is like February 15th or something like that. And that's where we would have our, you know, our bond hearing and do all those things that would satisfy that. Sell the bonds sometime in, in March and have the proceeds sometime early, mid-April, which should work out just perfect. Because, you know, plus or minus a little bit from construction start, there's some flexibility there, whether we pay some cash out of the fund and, and backfill it. But the nice thing about waiting for when we actually have bids back is we know exactly what we need to go after. You know, so we're not, you could, you could do it earlier than guests, and then you have extra proceeds or not enough proceeds. And I'd be more comfortable with, you know, getting those bids in and you know exactly what we need to go after. So, so really, everything's dovetailing together really nicely. Again, plus or minus a month, April start date for construction is what we put in the, the document, the bid document, and be ready to go. So should be really good. I think, you know, it's kind of like, you know, the issues that we've had on, on Eighth Street for that part that have been there for a long time. But also, if you drive North Walnut and really look at it, it's almost starting to look a lot like it did when I first got here before we kind of put the Band-Aid on it. So it's really getting mushed out. And, you know, again, this, this wet weather now, again, it's been dry the last nine to 10 months, really. But before that really didn't number on those spots. And there's not a lot of material there. So anything underneath it gets pretty squishy pretty fast. And that's really what we're finding every time we unzip one of these things. It's just, you know, especially over on Eighth Street, for example, it's just squishy clay. There's not much there, you know. So it's, it'll be good to get that finally resolved. Any questions on North Walnut or anything like that? All right. Sports complex update. Again, I think we'll talk about that here in a little bit. So I'll just skip that for now. I don't really have anything besides, besides those, besides for planning and, and working to move on that. South Highway 14 update. That went out for bid. Again, it's a local bid, so Schwab Eaton will be managing that bid for us. I went out for bid late last week, so we'll get it in the paper. And then it'll be, of course, in the, they have their list of a dozen or so contractors they send it to. And we give a pretty big construction window so we can get a good price. But there are contractors in the area doing stuff. So it still might be a possibility against done in the fall. But we'll, of course, know that when we award the bid and get some indication from them. But that's a, I believe that's a 30-day, it's also a 30-day bid window. So we'll know sometime mid-August where we're at on that. So. And then safe routes to school. To see, we had our punchless walkthrough on that. So there's still some things that they need to get fixed up on that. But all in all, a lot of activity on it, a lot of people walking on it. So it's been a, a good project. So we'll, we'll get kind of more finality on that as, as we get things wrapped up on it. But trying to think of anything else. That's all I've really got. The, the C-clip application that we applied for, for North 14, we just got that like yesterday, and we did not get that one again. Stewart and I are probably going to really push. I think if we keep relaying this to them, and with COVID, it doesn't help because they don't really come, or they do, but they try not to. So we're really going to really push for the regional guy, his name is Shad Lomen. He's out of Salina. And we're going to really push for him to come next time to onsite, because I think, just pay attention a little bit. If you try to, you know, Ponson Prior, obviously, is really busy, especially since they moved their retail portion down. And so I keep relaying to these folks. It's like, you know, where their entrance is, is where the middle turn lane is gone, you know. But yet, there's still some, there's still some pinch downs. So people kind of go in there. I mean, I do it myself, you know what I mean? It's really not a turn lane. And now, now just pay attention when you drive through there the next time, you know, with that, that dollar store going in there, it's just going to be that much worse. So I think that's going to help kind of push some of the safety stuff. You know, not wishing for any vendor vendors, but that doesn't hurt either. And it's, I think that's going to just become more and more of a cluster as things go on. And obviously, hopefully, more, or businesses or more things or houses go in through there. That only helps with that. But that's going to be kind of our next strategy push. It's just a scoring thing, just like anything else. You know, so a lot of it's pavement condition, you know, pavement, even though it's asphalt, but it's fairly new through there. It's not, not great shade, but it's, you know, it's serviceable. And then, you know, it's kind of the safety side of it. And, and I think we got, I think we just need to demonstrate that more and get their eyeballs on it. So it's just one of those, you just keep pushing on it, and eventually it's going to come. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Heather, we'll turn it over to you.
I've got a lot to do, actually. Okay, so a few things. You know, we keep talking about people wanting to move to the area and, or just reference. But for reference, we had somebody send out five more packets today of information of people that are curious about the area. So they're really hearing about us. They're hearing about the schools. And so it's all good information. But there is a bright video out of a speaker that they've hired through the Creda organization, which is the Western Kansas Economic Development Association, to come out and talk about rural being the next place to pioneer. If anybody wants to watch that, get sent to you. But it is kind of interesting talking about how people really went to the coast, to those first cities, those big cities, and then they became oversaturated. And then they went to the second cities, and those are becoming oversaturated. And now they're in the third cities, which are like our Wichita's. And now those are becoming oversaturated even further than they thought. And so now they're really looking at rural, rural places. And so if you've seen, Julie and I spend a lot of time looking at all of our websites, and, you know, websites are getting updated all the time, which is great. So we look a lot better to the outside than we have at all. And so that's all really good information. Network Kansas, when I went to one of the retreats, I thought that past season, just in case anyone's curious, but we are ordering these books, Solomon Valley Economic Development, along with Network Kansas, has given some money towards this. And these will be available in my office. These are just samples, so they will have our information on it, Mount Ohio, or True Value, or whoever it is. But what I love about these is if people are wanting to start a business, or they're already in a business and they want more information. This one is about business plans. This one's about how to read a financial statement, which is always important. This one is managing cash flow. This one is a marketing plan, which is great. And then I just ordered a few of these, which is for buying and selling your small business. But as a set, these are like $50 a set. So I was very thankful SPD gave me $3,500 and then Network Kansas gave $1,000. So we will have those ordered. We're going to design them so they have all of our information on them. And that way, when someone is coming to look at the business, there's some great information there. Prior action, hopefully, you will also have the kids around town. Yes, hopefully, yes. Okay, good. So we had 75 kids in town last week, and they come again from the Swine Diocese, which covers from Manhattan all the way to the Colorado border. And then pretty much, I said, the north. We had 75 kids in town last week and sponsors. We have only like 30 or 40 this week. And then we have again 75 to 80 kids next week. You do not have to be insulated with the church to get any work done. And hopefully, you've seen them all over town working. They do a lot of scraping and painting and yard work, and they do it for free. So I don't know if they're still looking for projects, but if you happen to come across somebody that has a project that they need to be worked on, there's some really great kids out there doing that. We did do some little thank you cookies. And I signed up for my, really, the city and Solomon Valley Economic Development to do some thank you cookies. Because the kids not only volunteer, and I know I tell you this, but they give up their cell phones, and they sleep on a gym floor, and they shower. Thank goodness, Lloyd opened up the shower, so they're showering at Lloyd High School, because our showers are now the church, because everybody's in the church and the gym. So they're, you go up to Lloyd High School and shower, and they pretty much eat peanut butter and jelly for lunch. They give up their phones, and they pay $75 to do this. So it's a really cool thing, and we work really hard. I've noticed, because they're in some of my naters, and they've done a really, really good job. So if you see them, thank them. Because not only are the kids coming from across the state, but they have tons of sponsors with them too. And there was a great little video that they sent out today, and they had them all over town. It was really cute. For some reason, they're at Pump Mart and they're like pumping iron, which I'm thinking they probably think Pump Mart's a really funny thing, like a funny name, you know? So there's this little video, and they're all up there like pumping at Pump Mart, but it's really cute. But for instance, if you happen to drive by the street house, or the one by, what do we call that house where Bob Miller lived? By the Ford House, they did a ton of work over there. They were at Jan Care, it goes to, and they did a great job over there.
How many properties have they touched? Ever do we know?
Oh my gosh. Last week alone, I think they were at six or seven. And, and like, some of them were full-on painted, and they looked really nice. Again, I hope my kids have one of the paintbrushes, I've seen that kid paint, but they did some painting and did some stuff. So, yeah, they did a great job. Okay, if anyone has any properties or no many properties that were affected by flooding, evidently, we have a flooding disaster here, May 15th and 16th in Mitchell County. It wasn't really here, it was in Osford. We figured out because we're contiguous to Osford, we are accounted. And so if you know anyone, business or residence, so commercial or residential, that had any flooding, May 15th or 16th, they're eligible for SBA, low-interest federal disaster loans, and they are very low-interest loans. They just have to fill it out by August 27th. I keep spreading the word, because I don't know if anyone knows that. But if you do, let me know. There is a land bank discussion next Wednesday, August 28th, in Jewel. Yeah, at the Jewel Community Room. Anyone who's curious about knowing more information about land bank, or send me a message, or send me the information. It's free. It's like nine to noon. And the lady there is the former mayor of Stafford County, and she did a really good job in Stafford County about land banks. So anyone who wants some information? Destination Boot Camp, the gentleman who actually ran Destination Boot Camp will be in town next week, Wednesday, the 28th again, which is kind of nice, if he'll see our area. It's not only good for our business owners that he can work one-on-one with them, but also he talks about the places he goes usually very positively. So he'll get a opportunity to talk about it when he goes to other places. And then the median wage information is out across all Kansas counties. And just for reference, the median wage, remember, you take the top and the bottom off. This really is the middle. It has increased in 79 counties. It's decreased to 26 counties. I'm always happy when ours increases. So we are at $15.80 an hour. Last year, we were at $15.56, so we've increased by 24 cents, which is good. We just want to see it increase. And then just a reminder, we had the races last week. We went into the races, got raved out the first night, and I was really worried about the second night. But on the second night, there was just many people the second night. And we go through the parking lot. 95% of them are Mitchell County, so that's always good for us. So everyone came to town for the races. This week, obviously, the fair. The tech school kids move in August 21st, I think, 2021st, and then Milos is September 11th.
Thank you. Turn the meeting back over to Jason.
All right. Yeah. All right. So like, as promised, the Stewart, Paul, Schwab Eaton, and the Tetra Tech team are going to give us kind of an update and a presentation on the work that they've done so far in the parks that they've made. And it should be exciting. I think it kind of puts some, some meat on the bones or some, some real, some real, wow, pictures to what they're, what they're doing. So I guess I'll make sure we got kind of everything on and turned it up. So Stewart, I'll turn it over to you and kind of go from there.
Okay. Greetings, everyone. It's good.
Hold on, Stewart.
Oh.
Are you muted?
I don't think I'm muted. Am I? I can hear you, Stewart.
Anybody else talk? John?
I can hear.
You guys hear me? Hold on.
Yeah, we can hear each other.
Yeah.
Okay, Jason, can you hear us?
How many times I use this? It works perfectly. The one time I want to use it. Test. All right, Stewart, can you go ahead and talk maybe?
Yes, can, can you hear me okay?
And there we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, it's good to meet with you. There has been a lot of work that has gone on behind the scenes. And we are to a point where we're ready to start presenting information to you. So our objective tonight is to briefly go over with you where we've been, where we're at currently, and, and where we're going. So here in a minute, one of our participants, Amanda Taylor, is going to share her screen and kind of provide an outline of our, the talk that we're going to give you. The first thing we're going to do is I'm going to introduce the members of our team that are present tonight. So first of all, we have, on the Schwab Eaton side of things, we have Jeff Shamberg and Jonathan Anschutz with us. We also have, or would have Jerry Meyer and Keith and Meyer, but both of those guys are on vacation, so they are not with us tonight. And on the Tetra Tech side of the equation, John Brummer, whom you all have met, and Amanda Taylor is, is with us tonight. Another key person on the Tetra Tech side is a gentleman named Jarrett Kinslow. He is at a membrane conference this week and is unable to join us, but he has been instrumental in design efforts to date. So as the, the process moves along, one of our objectives is to put faces with names for the city so that you can see who all is, in fact, working on your project. So, so the first, I guess, item of business here, we're going to bounce around a little bit. Each of us will talk a little bit about our respective pieces of the puzzle. But to get started, John Brummer will give a brief history of how we've gotten to this point and also do a little, give a little discussion about some of the testing that has taken place.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, I was going to talk about three main things of kind of where we've been, the taste and odor effort, feasibility study and pilot testing. About 2016, we started looking at some taste and odor control of objectionable earthy tasting water. It wasn't a health concern, but it was due to MIB and Geosman being released from the lake when it turned over. And we made some odds at the plant, worked with Jim and the city on that. But during that process, we made some discoveries. Number one is the lake water is a lot better raw water quality than the river, particularly with respect to organics, hardness, and turbidity or suspended solids. And one thing we found is that there was a presence of high amounts of bromide in the water, which you don't really expect in the surface water. And there was also a lot of low molecular weight dissolved organics in the water, both of which react with disinfectants like chlorine to create an EPA-regulated disinfection byproduct. And the old plant has done pretty well trying to keep up with that. And we've worked really hard to limp along throughout this process on it. But it's done, it's done its job. And I think it's, it's time to move on, as we all know, to another plant. We also had high amounts of chlorides in the water and sulfates, as we know, which they're regulated. But there seemed to be increasing in concentration over time, as, as well as other salts and dissolved compounds. And at that time, we kind of decided to do a feasibility to study to determine what is recommended going forward to meet the city's water quality goals. And those goals are, next slide, taste and odor control, of course, which got us started on all this. Bromide control, dissolved organics control, hardness removal or softening, and then pathogen removal and inactivation that KDHT requires. We want to have stable water in the distribution system that's not corrosive. And then, of course, we want to be able to meet current and future regulations. Go back, go back a minute there, Amanda. Sorry. So accomplish these goals, we came up with a treatment scheme. The first four there can be accomplished with RO. And really, the only, the only technology available for bromide removal, which is really important for us here, is RO. And then RO, of course, accomplishes our hardness and hardness removal and softening. The pathogen removal will be done with UF. Inactivation of pathogens will be with chlorine in this case. Also, the ultrafiltration membranes can remove suspended solids and take the load off the RO unit. And finally, we add a little insurance ahead of all those processes, the UF and RO with the clarifier to reduce DOC, suspended solid, algae color, and loading of the membranes. So we set up a pilot at Glen Elder, at the water plant right there at the dam. Procured the equipment and ran it for 90 days. We got great results with no fouling in the membranes. And that just shows UF unit on the left and the RO unit to the right. There's a strainer there in the middle and some break tanks and transfer pumps. But it looks like a lot of spaghetti, but it got us where we needed to be in a pinch. The next one shows the clarifier that we, this was the clarifier being unloaded. We actually set it outside of the building and kind of piped through, through the wall. So we're able to set up like a mini water treatment plant right there on site and test it. And it did work. So we were happy, we were happy about that. We didn't have to invest a bunch of money on something we weren't certain was going to work. Next slide. So once we ran that successful pilot, we presented alternatives for building a new plant or integrating the UF RO plant in the existing facility and potentially adding clarifications. And we landed on integrating into the existing plant. We are somewhat shoehorning this building in the corner there, but it looks like it's going to work. And we have a lot of infrastructure that can be reused, including the clear well, the sledge handling facilities, and ice service pumping. I'd just like to say I'm very glad to be part of this process, seeing it through to the end. And fast forward to today, after the pilot study, we assembled a great team to get this to the finish line. I'm lucky enough to have two of the best membrane experts helping you with the, with this design as well. And that's Amanda and Jarrett that Stewart had introduced. So hopefully, I can meet Jarrett and get to talk to him a little bit, too. So we've taken design at 30% level. Amanda will go into more detail on the process in a bit. I should back up a little bit, I guess. Between the pilot and where we are now is a very important step that Stewart and company performed, getting KDHT preliminary approval, going through the Waystream summary approval process, and then assisting with getting funding. But we have done some additional water quality testing and tweaked some of the chemicals. And it's going to be used for clarification. It's going to work better on the long term for the membranes. We've also concluded that we need the ability to run flow around the RO process. What that means is we would take filtered water that's still hard, and we've stabilized the water by running a portion of that hard water around the RO and blending it together to stabilize the water. So we want to be able to do that and have the ability to run straight through the RO with all of the water. So that's a little departure from what we had told KDHE before. And so Stuart and Jonathan are going to talk a little bit more about that.
Right, thanks, John. So as with virtually any complicated project, as we get more information, we need to be able to react and and make changes. And on this project, there have been a couple of fundamental changes that that have been made. So KDHE has requested a document called a a summary of changes document. It's not necessarily a standard procedure for KDHE, but because there are some items that we are proposing with this project that don't fully match the original preliminary engineering report, they requested that a formal document be put together. So Jonathan has been instrumental in in putting that document together. And I'll let him describe just a little bit. The the items that are being proposed as changes, and then we will get into the 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 plan preparation efforts that have taken place to date.
Yeah, thank you, Stuart. So this document kind of entails, John kind of mentioned it a little bit, but there's a lot of chemical changes. I shouldn't say a lot. There are few chemical changes that we are making to what we originally thought we would use in the treatment process. Those are things that KDHE is going to want to see. And it goes along with like clarification and also, as John said, just chemicals that will be able to be used ahead of the RO and UF membranes. So this document contains that as well as Jeff is going to get into this more, but we are proposing to reuse the pre sedimentation basin as the clarifier with just making a few modifications to it as a way of reducing costs and making like a more economical design of the project. And John also kind of mentioned the the bypassed water. We're we did not originally address that in the original PER that we submitted to KDHE. So we have some like additional chemicals that are going to be added after that if the city at any point wants to use the RO membranes for more of like the waste or the the raw water stream going through it to make it so that it's not corrosive to the pipes. So those are the major, I guess, topics that are going on in this document. We've talked with KDHE once about this document, we submitted submitted it to them. We're currently working through comments that they had. So that is in the works and it's about to head out as soon as we have all the supporting document documentation for it. So.
Right. And and like Jonathan said, one of the one of the the original parameters that was included in the preliminary engineering report was a certain theoretical amount of bypass blending for water stability. And the number that we had originally proposed was was 30% bypass for remineralization purposes. And testing has shown that during the worst conditions, we probably will need to tighten that bypass percentage down just a little bit. So those are the types of changes that KDHE is wanting to see. Another change that is just a it's simply a chemical change. We had proposed that we were going to use powder activated carbon as as one of the chemicals in the in the treatment process. And through additional research, we've determined that that's really not the best. That's not the best chemical to be using. And so KDHE wanted that to be listed. So just more than anything, they are tweaks to the overall treatment process that that KDHE wants additional information on. So I'm going to pass it over to Jeff Shamber. Jeff is a relatively recent hire of Schwab Eaton. He comes to us with a tremendous amount of water treatment experience. And he's been a very valuable asset to this project and wants you guys to to get to know him. You'll see him as this project moves through design and into construction. But he's going to talk about the clarification piece because this is one of the more significant developments that has taken place to date.
Thanks. Yeah, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, good. Yeah, I was excited. One of my first conference calls when I came on board with Schwab Eaton, John's John's face popped up on the screen. John was an engineer that I worked under ironically on my very first treatment projects that I was exposed to. So it's fun to get to work with him again. But what I was talking about tonight, what I'm planning to talk about tonight is this clarification change. So our original PER that was written and in the pilot study, I believe, considered a type of clarifier called a super pulsator clarifier. And we don't need necessarily get into all the mechanics of how a super pulsator clarifier works, but but I went on a tour with Stuart of the plant and we walked through and saw, I think, probably the newest building on the campus there at the water plant, and that was the the preset basin. Relatively new building and in great condition. And the first question was, you know, what are we doing with this thing? And well, we're not exactly sure yet. But couldn't help but notice that it was. It was in great shape. It's doing its job. Clarification is kind of a strange part of these projects because in many other states, we might consider direct filtration where we take the the water from the water source and and maybe with just a little bit of of cleanup in front, we put it directly onto the ultra filtration membranes. In Kansas, that's not allowed. And so we have to have a clarification step. And so on a new facility, we might consider various options on a on a facility like this where we're retrofitting in. You start to look at what we have on site, and we've got a great clarifier already. We're trying to achieve a few different objectives. John talked about those earlier. We're trying to to get some initial hit on the the organics that are in the water, maybe some of the algae staining. And then also just remove general bulk solids, something that may be floating or suspended in the water and give it a chance to settle out. What that does for us is it it takes some load off of the ultra filtration membranes. It allows them to run longer between back washes and it allows for them to to focus, I guess, not that they have a mind, but to focus on the things that we're really counting on them for. And not not necessarily get plugged up with all of those things. So if we're required by the state to have a sedimentation basin, this is this is a pretty effective way to do it. We completed jar testing. The jar testing really mimicked the process that you guys have in your in your preset basin, what's called a preset basin right now. And and it performed really well with with the various chemicals that we that we trialed. So we feel very comfortable. We can continue to use the existing preset basin, not construct a a new basin, not construct a super pulsator clarifier like what was proposed in the the pilot study and and be successful here. And that's based off of the things I already talked about here, that the the ultra filtration followed by RO processes, super robust, it's capable of processing this stuff without clarification. The state requires us to have clarification anyway. And so we might as well get the most out of it we can. But but probably this is an area where we can look at bang for the buck. And you guys have an existing facility that you've sunk money into. It's performing adequately. And so it makes sense for us to talk KDHE, work through this process and and at least try to work through some scenario where we get to reuse the facility in this way. I guess to close up on this clarification piece, it is it is a work in progress. We're proposing this KDHE as a change in that summary log that that Jonathan was talking about earlier. It's not a done a done deal. They still got to provide some feedback. We've had a couple of meetings with them now, and they've had opportunity to tell us no, and they haven't said no yet. So they haven't said yes either, but we don't know of any reasons right now why they wouldn't be on board, and they're not indicating any initial rejection. So we're going to keep working down this path. And yeah, I asked Stuart if I should come in with a dollar figure that we're saving on the project. Kind of bad it back and forth, but it's a it's a significant amount of money that we're saving potentially. You know, over a million dollars that we were able to save if we can go this route. So I it's easy to throw those kind of numbers around, but there may be some things we have to do as concessions to allow this to work that may eat into some of those savings as we work through things with KDHE. But it's it's a big savings if we can pull this off. And we're pretty excited about getting to reuse good facilities.
Thanks, Jeff. I'm going to backtrack just a little bit. One of the things that I was going to talk about and I and I skipped ahead to clarification is the the water transmission line that we've been discussing for quite some time. The the plans are progressing. The Bureau of Reclamation has been engaged and we're working through that process as well. I would say the water line plans are probably in the the 50 to 60% range. If any of the council members or Jason wanted to see what we've got for a route, the route is the same as we've been talking all along, but we are basically at the point where we need to start working on easements. And that's one of the things that I'll be talking to Jason about here in the in the the coming couple of weeks. So so that is one of the next steps that we need to be working on. So we'll move on and talk about the the stuff that has a little more glitz and glitter to it. Amanda is going to take us through a little bit of a tour of the proposed plant. And and this is this is the the nuts and the bolts, the 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 brains of the water treatment facility. And this is pretty fascinating stuff. So hopefully you find this interesting.
Thanks, Stuart. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So yeah, this is your new treatment facility that we're proposing showing on your on your screen now. I'll kind of start out by taking you for a walk through the facility in terms of the process flow. So your flow is going to come in through a buried pipe up here on the northern side of the building. That's going to be coming from a UF feed pump station located out by the preset basin or the clarifier, wherever that ends up being located. We'll have a some vertical turbine pumps in a pump sump with some automatic strainers out in the out in the yard. And you have a buried pipe coming into the building here and into a trench in your building where it will feed the UF process first. These are the UF trains here. You'll have three trains initially and then one train, a space for one train in the future. The filtrate from the UF train goes into the trench as well and then feeds this brake tank located here in this blue area. The brake tank allows a buffer between the UF and the RO and also is a location where you'll pull your your bypass to to blend with the RO permeate. So your RO feed pumps here drive the water through the cartridge filters, which feed your RO system. And they also drive the bypass blend, which goes into the trench here and ends up blending with the permeate coming out of the RO train here. The RO transfer pumps go through the cartridge filter, like I mentioned, and feed the RO train through these high pressure pumps. These high pressure pumps are vertical turbine pumps in cans that drive the extra pressure that's required for the RO system, you know, to overcome osmotic pressure. The RO feed pumps feed two trains. We're showing right now two trains mirrored on each other for phase one. And then you've got one future train and pump system shown here. After the RO train, you're going to have your permeate, which is your product water. As mentioned, it'll already be blended with any bypass and then you'll hit it with chlorine and with any post treatment stabilization chemicals required along this eastern wall before going into the yard and onto the chlorine contact loop. You also have some waste pipes coming off of the RO system, and those will go to your existing. And you'll have a continuous stream from the RO concentrate. And then you're going to have and a stream from your RO permeate. It's just during startup or off spec events. And then you've got several ancillary support systems associated with both the RO and the UF system. For the UF system, you have a CIP system that does CIPs and what's called CEBS, which are chemically enhanced back washes. And that system feeds overhead piping to the same valve rack for the UF system. And then you've got a backwash and air scour system which feeds the valve rack again overhead of your US train. You have several chemicals that support this process, the CIP processes. Your bulk chemicals will be located in a separate room down here on the south side. You've got your sulfuric acid, sodium hydroxide, sodium hypochlorite. Your sulfuric acids in a dedicated room, and then you have your bases in a shared room, each with a dedicated containment area and chemical metering pumps outside of the chemical room in your main process area. But they will be in containment skids and with splash guards. And then you have smaller chemical consumption from these citric acid, liquid ammonium sulfate, antiskaline and your sodium bisulfite. Those will be in totes and drums on containment pallets with scales and then with the pumps out in front. And then we do have one chemical, your calcium chloride, or it could be calcium hydroxide. We're kind of working through that that doesn't require containment and it's bulk. So that'll be out in the common area, too. It's an inert chemical. And you have your RO CIP system out here in the purple. So I'm going to take you on. I want to show you a 3D view of this building layout, what we have so far, but I don't want you to get lost in seeing it. So I wanted to kind of describe quickly first. The first view is coming down here from the south, looking towards the north east. And the second view that we're going to look at is going to be up here on the north looking south, looking the opposite side. So look at this side towards the UF first, and we'll look down south, looking towards the RO second. Here's your building, again, looking at that first view towards the northeast. Here's your UFCIP system here, your UF backwash and air scour system here. These are the UF racks. All of your modules are in the back on the rack. And then all of your valving is in the front, right over that trench, kind of hanging over that trench. It's on a rack that's bolted on either side of the trench. Your chemicals in their dedicated rooms over here, and then your chemicals that are in the common process area on the totes, in the totes and on the skids. And you've got your brake tank here and your RO trains here. And then this is that piping I mentioned along the wall where you're going to have your extra chemical addition. Looking from the opposite side, taking a view this way, you've got your RO trains here. This is the future train. So these these 3D views show the full build out. Initially, you only have the two RO trains and the three UF trains and two cartridge filters. But looking from the north, you can see your RO trains here. These are the cartridge filters, your brake tank, your totes on the skids, your UF trains. You can kind of see better how this valve manifold ends up laying out over the trench and your your support facilities, your UFCIP and your UF backwash. So you have several overhead doors that we've located in the building strategically to ensure that you can get your tanks out as needed, that you can replace modules as needed. And then and then several man doors as well. Any questions?
I have a question. Is it is it purely financial that it's not a full build out from the get go? Or is is there other concerns besides financial?
Well, that's a that's a good question. I think it's important to point out that that phase one is 1.8 MGD or million gallons per day. Your current plant is 1.5 million gallons per day. The the plant has historically operated at peaks of 1.1 to 1.2 million gallons per day. So we while we have brought the Real Water District 3 online and they are buying water from the city, this phase one approach is a substantial amount more capacity than the city has ever been used to. So we believe that that it's prudent to So we believe that that it's prudent to design additional capacity into the plant. But we believe that that additional capacity will need to come a substantial timeframe down the road. Unless something changes relative to water demands. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I could add to that real quick, Stuart.
You bet.
I I mean, the other thing that we consider as we work through this process, and it dovetails with what Stuart said. That there's portions of this plant that degrade, that you fight corrosion on on metals. You uh you have different materials that degrade over time, whether you use them or not. And 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 that's gonna represent some sort of an operating expense and you guys that operate facilities anywhere else, you I mean. You've got a fixed portion of your your expenses that are just from things wearing out, maybe times you don't even use them. And so there's no reason for us to overbuild a facility to the two, three, four times the size it needs to be, even if. You know, debt is cheap like it is now, or uh or or you've got the team assembled and and all the design elements are in place. It still doesn't make a lot of sense to to overbuild the facility just because you're gonna end up with racks of stuff that just end up wearing out. Before you even get a chance to use them.
Thank you. This is Andrew. I'm I'm just sort of wondering. How do these changes affect the timeline that we originally had sort of laid out? And also, what are the highest risks that we are facing at this time in the process?
Well, timeline is difficult to answer. Because KDHE has requested the the change, the summary of change document. And we're going to also have to follow that up with another document called a waste summary, waste stream summary review. Uh update. Those documents will take some time to review. But provided that we are not getting any negative feedback, we will continue working on the. The plant design as we have described tonight and and. The 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 concepts that that we're sharing with you. So. I don't know that that slows us down a lot, but we will need to go through those steps in order to get KDHE concurrence. Relative to pitfalls. I don't know that we we have identified any 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 major hurdles to get over yet. Other than just getting through these changes that we've discussed and making sure that KDHE is on board. But based on a a video conference that we had with KDHE last week. I I feel comfortable in saying that they they kind of like Jeff alluded to. They didn't say no when we talked to him about some of these changes. We believe that they're on board with them in concept. And it's more a matter of formalizing it. To to ensure that everybody is on the same page.
And to be clear, the changes that we're discussing minus the financial benefit potential of savings. Would either produce equal to or greater than quality products coming out of our facility?
I would say unequivocally, yes. The intent is to provide not only. A a higher quality of water during difficult to treat raw water times. But also the ability to optimize your process and dial in the plant. At a level that that allows you to consistently. Meet water quality standards and and produce the highest quality of water that you can. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to that? Because I feel like I was redundant in what I said, but I mean. Our our intent is to provide the greatest level of flexibility so that so that the the cities. A water plant can can be all it can be. Other questions?
How are we going to be able to continue to produce during the retrofit?
That's a really good question. That's one of the engineering challenges that we will get into as we move closer to the finish line. After we have KDHE's comments and we know for certain which pieces of equipment are going in which place. We know flow rates, we know electrical loads, we know all those things. We will develop a phasing plan so that the existing plant stays online and functional while the new plant is being built.
Thank you.
Jason Shirley, you've got a question. You've always got questions.
Yeah, no, I really think they're, you know, they're doing a good job. Obviously, we've all known the challenge of KDHE tends to present, but I feel like we've got a really good team. I think, you know, just not not speaking out of turn, but you know, we've we've got some team members that have some prior experience relationships with some of the KDHE folks. So I think that helps to kind of help read the room a little bit as we're we're getting through these challenges, but. I kind of too had the same concerns with that that preset basin, you know, obviously one concern is it's a really nice building. We spent a lot of money on it not too long ago. So it is great to try to reuse it, but yeah, not necessarily want to do that to uphold or sorry, slow the. And also to Andrew's point, reduce the quality. So I think I've had those same questions and those same assurances. So it's exciting if we can pull it off. But yeah, absolutely. We don't want to shortchange it. You know, a million dollars is a lot of money, but you know, for fifty years, it's not that much. So. So anyways, yeah, I'm I'm excited with it and it's nice seeing you talking to Stuart and everybody is, you know, I feel like there's always progress being made and always having these meetings. Does anybody else have any questions? I think we got the crack team here. I know one thing that Stuart and I discussed a little bit. He saw a little bit of preview of the building shape and obviously they're working on a more of a site plan. And maybe even some some a little bit more of a model so he can, which helps all of us, right? See it kind of visually like we've got to just see now on the inside. So kind of how it fits up there and 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 kind of what, you know, maybe traffic changes or how we have like a loading and unloading zone and all that. Hold up, how all that is going to work. So we kind of made an agreement that we're gonna try to have that solidified. And obviously, there's always gonna be tweaks and changes, but for for the most part, I'm gonna present that by our August eighteenth meeting. So it won't be the next one, but the one after. To kind of show you what that looks like more sitting on the ground and how it's gonna fit in the yard there. And I think it'll be really good. So. Anything else for Stuart, anybody on your team at all? I really appreciate it, everybody.
What's the next milestone where we feel we're gonna have this kind of another meeting?
Well, our our next milestones are submitting and receiving comments on the the summary of changes document. The waste stream summary review. When we get to the waste stream summary review, I think that one will be pretty straightforward. But KDHE nonetheless has requested that. That document and then we will follow that up with yet another document that will be a design. A formal design memorandum, which is a a compilation of the information that we submitted to you last night. It will it will involve thirty percent design drawings and descriptions and test data. And and all of the things that we have done to date. And KDHE will work their way through that process. And assuming that there haven't been any negative results that come out of our change summary of changes document. Once again, we'll continue to work through the design process while KDHE is reviewing the the design memo.
Awesome. Well, thanks, guys. I think we covered it. And obviously, there's things you guys think about at any time, me, obviously, with. After tonight, you had another question pop up. Feel free to email us, because I will probably push that through to Stuart and he'll get the answer from from the. Person on their team to to answer that. And I think keeping you guys informed is one of those things that is becoming more real. I think hopefully tonight that shows the reality of it, but obviously, there's still nothing there, you know. So as you talk to residents, they've talked to people. Progress is is being made. You know, we're starting to expend funds, you know, from the the construction loan, you know, for the design services to date. So we had our first formal submission of that. So things are starting to happen. Obviously, it's a lot more easy to point to it when it's actually in the ground, but. There's a lot of work that has to be done prior to and I appreciate all you guys' efforts. So we'll let you hop off and get back at it.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight and there will be more to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart.
You bet.
Okay. Next time when we begin this evening will be the consent agenda. So I've been moved by Councilman Nolan to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Then I have a second, but taken by Councilman Adolf. Any discussion? No discussion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Both say. May I have the word and the resolutions this evening? So we'll move to formal actions. The Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance Renewal. Jason, you have some comments on that?
I mean, basically, I wrote in here, obviously, we kind of went over the changes that we're proposing last meeting. We did have a employee. Meeting with Alicia Bond that works with. Mark I think of, yep. So she came down, did another great job. She did a retirement education seminar for our employees. A couple of months ago, so they have a relationship with her. So we had everybody in here, two different meetings about a week and a half ago to talk about the impacts. So. We feel comfortable saying, yeah, let's go ahead and move forward with it and get in place.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve motion by Councilman Greer Ron that we approve the insurance renewal of a second. Second by Councilman Deanware. Any discussion? Those in favors, signify by saying aye. Both say. Motion carries. Next item is a special event that should talk apart for the Prairie Linnies. Kind of a yearly thing. They did have it last year.
They used to do it a long time ago and then they started it back in last year to do their second year.
Motion by Councilman Beamer, we approve the special event for the Prairie Linnies at Chautauqua. Second, second by Councilman Nolan. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is another special event for the Mill of Bluesa. Looks like we're gonna close off our March parson portion of downtown for this event. Entertained a motion to approve. So then motion by Councilman Adolf to approve the special event for Mill of Bluesa. About a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Nolan. Any discussion?
And that whole committee and team does a good job, so you know, going around making sure everybody knows about it on board. They'll get the street closure stuff and all that kind of thing. So just so you are aware of that, it's usually it's pretty well, usually pretty well coordinated with everybody.
Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Both say. Next time is the twenty twenty-two budget notice of intent.
Yeah, so this is kind of that, just a, again, this year is kind of a, to my better word, almost a practice year, if you will. So we had to give notice of intent. There's really one, I wouldn't know if I could exactly say it's a flaw, but it's an unknown. So I'm gonna call it a flaw in legislation. And that's really that you're almost required to do that notice, but tend to exceed, even if your budget is set, which ours is, you know, increasing by like seventeen dollars. But even if your budget is set for zero, because it's simply out, you know, we don't know, we can set the middle levy, but really the unknown is the. How many, first of all, how many people are actually gonna pay their taxes and the delinquents and the the the. Yeah, and they would realize they should, when that actually comes in, those are estimations, obviously, evaluations change a little bit or something comes online. So all of a sudden, like last year, we ended up collecting maybe, you know, some years it's a little less, some years it's a little more. Well, then you got. Bring away law, right? And you you violated that and we got a whole other mess to deal with. So I'm hoping that that gets realized and maybe that gets fixed before next year for some sort of that. See, what if you did have a year where you said, yeah, we want to be neutral. Well, then you have this risk that maybe you collect a thousand dollars more or ten thousand or whatever, you know, even though you didn't intend to. Split it all back up and mail it all back out. I guess somehow, I don't know. Yeah, I'm in the budget and all sorts of that. So anyways, nothing's really changed from what we had before. I had this prepared here. Kind of going back. So again, this is kind of the year on year increases from last year. So it's about sixteen thousand dollars more for this year. Again, a five year average, well, the average is about one point four five percent increase. And that's kind of a turn from the. Five year period prior, which is about nine percent. So trying to trying to bring that in, but that's that's where we're at. So this is just a notice of intent. And then basically, it'll be our first September first meeting will be kind of when we'll actually do a seat, a series of of events that are required. But maybe you'll have it all laid out. Basically, that series of events will be all at the same meeting and it'll be adopting the budget. Meeting all the requirements of the law. So. We're seeing the formal action now.
Second by Councilman Hadi. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those both say. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Andrew. I'm gonna excuse myself. I apologize.
Next item of business is the upgrade lighting for cookie ball field. So recommendation canceled through the quote for silicon electric for LED lighting for a cookie ball field in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Question, is it right?
This is the field that the lines had that we're gonna make a park of light.
This is the field that's getting moved across the street. Yes, yep.
So all these lights will still be used once it's moved.
So yeah, to kind of to kind of, I'll set it back up. So basically, we're just moving cookie lines field across the street to that new location. So part of this, we're trying to reuse as much as we can. It already has lights on it. The lights have been on there, been on there for for quite a while. They're all, they're older, they're all highlighter, highlight lights type of deal. And the field's never been lit very well. That's been admitted from when they first put events. They kind of didn't really put them in great locations. And of course, the lights degrade over time. So we're gonna do the lighting and move them, you know, move them to the new location across the street. And we can utilize the poles, we'll run the wires. But as part of this exercise, I just asked, hey, what what if we upgrade the light? So basically, the the lights are on top. It's kind of the frame, you know, if you go up, it's like a T frame, like it's on the back here. Yeah, there's this component. Right here. So basically, the poles are fifty-five feet tall. So about fifty feet up is where there's a plant. And this this unit here is bolted on there. So we would take the existing set of lights off of that pole. To put this new set of LED lights. So they're, you know, they're instant on, they're, they actually can demo if you wanted to, whatever else. New controllers that are would be accessible and that kind of thing. So. Again, we can move the the actual light structure, the pole, not just the pole, but the whole light structure over and we can reuse them. It's not a problem. But I figured, you know, hey, what's a what's an in between? Obviously, new lights from scratch. I put fields before and and again, talking to Kyle confirmed it. You know, if you're doing new poles, do everything, you're you're probably in the six figure range pretty easily. So this is just a way to say, let's let's split the difference and while we're trying to reuse as much as possible, you know, we can upgrade the light portion of it.
I guess my question is, how how long's how long's this fix gonna be at the current location before it's torn down and moved?
Oh, so this, yeah, good question. So this, so obviously, we're in the process of moving that field across the street. So this would be done in conjunction with that. So.
At the same time of moving it over.
Well, yeah, basically, we would we would disassemble, you know, those light posts are in the ground right now. So if we disassemble those and bring them over here. We're just gonna take that light structure off and put the new one back on top.
So they'll be fully used in the field.
Correct. Yes. So next spring they'll be, you'll switch them on. They're the brand new lights.
Got my book.
Yeah. Yeah. We're trying to use half of the old, trying to make it good, but just, it's, it's basically like putting a new light bulb in, you know, changing from your incandescent to the new LEDs. And it's, it's, you know, it is what it is. It's probably something over time, you could, you're probably going to do it almost every field up there. You know, your softball field, high school baseball field, they could all really probably use that next step. And, and quite frankly, all of them can be retrofitted like this. So you're, 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 you're probably doing for about a third of the cost of a brand new from scratch system. You know, but it's, it's still, still dollars, obviously. But, um, you know, we're, we're, we're saving a lot in other places, you know? And so this is just a way to kind of do that field with fresh, fresh updated, starting to look, you know, it'll be, it will be quite brand new high school field level, you know, pulls it even a little tighter, taller, but it's going to be a significant improvement. So this is a whole different quality of lighting too. It's, it's night and day difference. And if you, you know, we've gone to tournaments, travel that plan our LEDs, it's just, it's just unbelievable difference. And if we can do it for this kind of money, I think you're, you're full of. Uh, the, the other thing that, uh, goes along with this is obviously we've got, you know, Kyle provides even a schematic, so they'll be aimed correctly, you know, so that'll, that'll be a big, uh, a big deal. And in the payment form, again, it's, it's still revenue, but it's coming from our alcohol sales tax, this alcohol tax that state can puts on it. So it's a little less guilt, you know, if you will, it's kind of that, 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 it's not property taxes, not even our local sales tax. It's kind of, it's, it's, it's actually parks money. The state, you know, part of that alcohol sales tax goes into a park fund. And in the past, we've used it for, for lots of different things. And, uh, it's kind of usually that stuff that's a little bit above and beyond or, um, and this probably fits that kind of bill where, you know, we can use some of that for, for something that'll again, have a, have a big effect, um, on that field as it kind of goes across the street. So.
They also mentioned here, you know, decreased operation costs.
Yeah.
So that'll help over time.
Yeah. And Kyle really indicated, I asked that, you know, those metal highlight lights, I mean, we're having to mess with those and touch them and do stuff with them quite a bit. Obviously they're just like anything else. You have some, you know, stinker go by and took the light off. You're, you're down to twenty minutes before you get it back on. But, but these lights, you know, they're, they're, they're even better than like your bulb in your house. I mean, they're, they're going to last a long, long time before you ever have to mess with the unit, if you will. So, uh, that, that's really nice too. Um, so anyways, yeah, that's.
Okay. We have motion, Councilor McMillan to approve, but second, second by Councilor Adolf. Is there any further discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Okay. Motion carries. Next item.
Sorry, I got a few things I needed.
Uh, okay. Demolition bid for two fourteen North Mill and four fourteen North Mill Street. Our council for demolition bid for property located two fourteen North Mill three five hundred and fourteen, four fourteen North Mill three eight thousand eight hundred. From C four construction, all state city will pay in the landhold fees. So the, the motion from Councilor Hottie, second by Councilor McMillan. And further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same. Motion passes. Next item up is, uh, winter weather events. I recommend the council consider one of three options to pay for the GRDA power contract adverse weather event cost. Jason, I'll let you talk about it.
Yeah, thanks. Yep. Uh, so, uh, again, this is kind of something we talked about. We said, hey, we really came out really well, but we know that there's kind of this dark shadow in the background of GRDA. Obviously a lot of power contracts that everybody purchased. That was kind of nice for us. We had, you know, four mega watts that were pretty protected. Obviously GRDA, just like WAPA or any other big outfit, they've got gas turbines that they use for this. So they had a pretty huge hit, uh, as well. Part of this, they're, they, they, we kind of knew this was coming and they probably indicated, hey, we're not going to just, just like everybody, we're not going to just say, hey, here's your bill and pay it, you know? So they kind of, you know, they had reserves. So now they've kind of made these, uh, oh, had their board meetings today, we're going to give you options or try to spread the cost out over a long period of time. So, uh, the, you know, the exposure, um, for GRDA was a hundred million dollars. KNEA, which is the forty-one cities, you know, got, took about seven million dollars of that hit. We're a pretty big piece, you know, not huge, seven percent, you know, up there of that outfit. Uh, and, and, and fortunately or unfortunately, you know, it's kind of gone back and forth over time. We're pretty well exposed to GRDA. You know, it's been kind of one of those things where like, you know, it's a good power contract. It's probably really good twenty years ago and we got into it and now we're like, man, we wish we didn't have it. For this event, yeah, it's probably pretty nice to have, even with this, it's still, it's still kind of nice to have for that event. Cause there is no way that we could have produced enough power, you know, based on what we were doing. Now, if we had access to gas, we could have, but it, you know, it's like we talked about a million times, we could go in on diesel. Even though that's expensive, it wasn't near as expensive as the gas. So long story short, uh, we, you know, at our KNEA board meeting, I finally came down here just a, a couple of days ago. And they said, hey, we're going to get this out to you as fast as possible. So my question to them was, you know, what's the cost? Lump sum, you know, just get off a hundred. You know, what, and what are our long-term payment options? You have to keep in mind, we only have GRDA. I'd say we won't after this, but for fifty-two more months. Okay. So we have fifty-two months left. So really the, the, the question was how long would this be spread over fifteen, fifty-two months? What would that look like? They also indicated, you know, if we spread it over fifty-two months, there's going to be a carrying cost, you know, some sort of an interest cost on there. So it's not substantial, but it's still twenty thousand dollars over fifty-two months. You know, it's still, you know, if you don't need to do it, why do it? So those are the three options basically are saying, hey, let's, let's figure out a way to, to pay it lump sum and I'll talk about that here in a second. Or, uh, pay part of it off and spread the rest over fifty-two months or just spread it over fifty-two months. If you spread it over fifty-two months, you know, you know, that GRDA piece of power, you know, is anywhere from thirty-five to forty bucks a megawatt over time. You know, so what they're projecting is it would tack on about a three dollars fifty-one cents. So about three cents a kilowatt. You know, not, not backbreaking, but again, it's already taken a expensive piece of power and it's just tacking it on. From, from that event, you know, we've had, we have about scrolled away in anticipation that's obviously, you know, power bills, even during that time were really low. You know, we, we, we did a good job. We really didn't keep a lot of it. We just kind of kept it to zero and then kind of just kept it, you know, a scrolled away some for, for kind of this anticipation of some additional cost down the road. So, uh, you know, I think residents, whether they admit it or not, you know, it's been a pretty good first half of the year. You know, obviously hot heat, I can't control that. So in June it's going to be high just because people use air conditioners. But, you know, our, our cost of power, two-year rolling average right now is, you know, in consumers about eighteen percent down, you know? So that, that's a really, really good thing. You know, year on year, it's about twelve percent down. Uh, so anyway, so we had about sixty-two thousand dollars left over, that we didn't really pass on to customer or anything like that, because, uh, just in anticipation of this. Let me get to the right screen here. So, yeah, so, so backing that up, our liability was three hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars. So that's what GRDA, that's our portion of the cost from that extreme under. You know, we had an existing credit that had really soaked up this anticipation of any surprises or whatever. Oh, about sixty-two thousand six hundred ninety dollars. Oh, thanks. Thank you. Yeah. It looks far enough. So we had about sixty-two thousand six ninety left over that we hadn't, we hadn't passed on. Really the number was, was bigger than that. We just, we just, we took the PCA down to zero, which was probably being extra generous. We're just trying to say, hey, we did a really good job. I want to share some of this. So anyways, sixty-two thousand six ninety. And then we have, uh, currently, we've only capped this one time and all of you remember that. I honestly can barely remember what the reasoning was. I believe it was some sort of a transmission true-up thing that they had screwed up when I first got here. And so we always have this TCR balance with KNEA. Basically it's, it's the winnings from hedging. You know what I mean? It's our portion of any sort of hedging of our contract power with data head power that they do and optimization. And they just kind of scroll it away there. And our city's always chosen, the bulk of the cities just say, hey, just keep it there. It's on credit with them. Some cities take it every month, you know, so it's incorporated right into their power bill and, and we just don't do that. So I feel really good about saying, well, it's really money that would have come off the cost of power over that time period. And so basically we've only used it one time and then we let it build back up. And that's what I'm proposing to do again. I mean, it's an extreme event. It's really associated with the cost of power. I mean, it really would come off the bills over, I guess it's over a four-year period. So it's not like we're, we're swirling away significant change dollars, but in this situation it really helps. So there's about a hundred fifty-six thousand four thirty-six sitting at KNEA, uh, that again, we, we have access to. And then that, that, that gives a remaining, uh, cold weather liability of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, seven, seven hundred eighty-seven cents. So we got pretty cold. We really, that's kind of like what Tom Seattle was, with, uh, KNEA said, we're pretty much for zero. And, and based on probably how much, uh, oh, sharing we did on the PCA and letting it go down to zero, that's, that's probably, you know, that would have been about zero probably. So, uh, we did, you know, Manny's team did a great job with that. Uh, so anyways, so it depends on, you know, that, that gets us down to a really a pretty small number in the scheme of things. And, and if the council's saying, hey, you know, keep this thing really, uh, balanced out, uh, basically what we can do is just do a, uh, divide that by the fifty-two months ourselves, that remainder a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and just do it as an adder to the, uh, PCA calculations. And it's basically like, you know, if you, I, I did the calculation here alone. You know, if you had a fifteen hundred kilowatt bill, which is probably a pretty average bill over the time period, uh, or actually it's probably, you know, a, a, a pretty significant summer bill. You know, it's, it's, it'd be like a bill like mine in May, June, maybe. Um, you know, it's going to raise it like a dollar by doing that. So it's a really minimal impact, especially when you hear the horse sorries that are going out there that, um, you know, and again, you know, that's, to me, probably the solution to keep it true to, um, with everything is to, to do it that, that way. And it saves us twenty thousand dollars. Yeah.
Hold on, hold on a little bit.
Sure.
GRDA, is that other communities, uh, spreading their, um, money they can't spend on to us?
No. So, yeah, good question back. So GRDA, yeah, GRDA is our, is a power, is, is a great, is the greater grand, I think it's a grand river dam authority. So that's one of our major power contracts that we have. So every hour we get four megawatts of power from them. And so during that five-day period, you know, they were producing power at, you know, let's say theoretically it costs them three thousand dollars a megawatt, you know, because the gas cost was so high. So our chunk of that power was probably pretty expensive. So they, they can't pass all that on to us, but they, they have a fuel cost adjustment that they can do. And so they're past, basically what they're saying is, hey, in our contract, it says that extreme cost, that gas, you need to share it that, if that makes sense. So during that five-day period back in February, if you remember, you know, the gas is crazy. So this is our portion of, of that cost. So, you know, our power is fixed in a way, but just like us, we have a way to say, hey, you know, this is an extreme event. We need to recoup some of that cost. And so that's what they're passing on to us. It's nobody else's cost. It's only ours. Makes sense.
I would move that we, uh, pay the lump sum.
Okay. With the strategy that I presented.
Yes, with the strategy that Jason just presented. So that's the motion, motion made by Councilor Grayvon. Uh, is there a second? No, I'm technically president. I can do that.
So.
Yeah, go ahead and ask what I was.
Two hundred twenty thousand.
Well, I think I.
The one twenty-eight.
One twenty-eight would be our. Well, yeah, we'd be three forty-seven.
We're using the credit of the two hundred.
Yeah.
Seven thousand and then pay the lump sum.
Yeah.
Out of pocket of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
In the end, in the end, we're just using several different sources to pay the three hundred forty-seven thousand. And what I'm proposing is the hundred and twenty-eight thousand gets distributed over fifty-two months to the customer. Cause that's just, it's actually probably what we should have collected in February and March when I, you know, I kept it pretty cheap. I kept it pretty thin, you know, cause I didn't know what was going to happen.
Literally we're paying it all upfront, right?
Yes.
Just getting it done and then we're passing that a little bit.
Just a little bit.
Customer for fifty-two months.
How's that going to show when the bills will be getting chewed out for it?
It really won't, Matt, because what I'm proposing, it's not, I mean, anybody can ask, but basically.
Well, you know, I mean, they're going to say, why my bill's so expensive?
Yes. Well, it's not.
Could have been twenty thousand dollars more divided by all of us over the next hundred two months, but we're not doing that. If it's only a dollar a month, nobody's.
Yeah, yeah. Basically what we're, yeah, it's, it's basically twenty-four hundred dollars that every power pay customer in all ways is going to help pay for part of that every month. So, yeah, you're, you're talking fifty cents to a couple of bucks. You know, if you're a huge power user, you might see five bucks. You know what I mean? Like I'm talking like a big company or something. So it's really pretty minimal. And, and I think here's, here's, here's the thing that to see. In a, in a way, we're trying to victim of our own success here.
As far as how it will show up, you're going to just lump that in with the PCA that you do every month, which is an adjustment that.
Yeah. Cause basically you just paid the way. It would have been in that February bill, but we didn't have it till now. You know, so I'm saying, saying, saying put in all one bill. It's just, I mean, it's going to barely, you're talking, it's going to barely do anything.
Hard to build so little, you know, build.
These kind of adjustments are happening every month. We as the customers don't see them.
Yeah. So here, here's the big thing. So here, Matt, right here. So, so you know, that PCA, um, number, which again is a calculation of a lot of different components of the power contracts that we have, you know, our own power production that we may have and all those things. So that's the variable part of your power bill. And over time, that's kind of where I'm showing that you can see over time, uh, in twenty fifteen, you know, we were over four cents, uh, on hours on that PCA. And right now we're, we're batting under three, you know, uh, over time. So we continue to, to, to whittle that down. And, and part of that is that this time period, so here's February, we passed on a zero PCA. In fact, we actually had somewhat of a credit, but we kind of stored some of that. So we, because we knew some of this was coming. So, so, so essentially, you know, I, I bet, I would almost bet if I went and normalized some of this to like, let's say a three cent PCA, we'd probably get that hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in those three months period there. That's just what it would, that's what it would have been all the time anyways, I guess. I don't know if I'm being clear or not, but right now our PCA is averaging two cents. You know, it's, it's, it's at normally low, um, compared to everything is because at that time, which you're right now, it's a long time ago already, but is that period. But that's why I think we're, we're, we're saying, hey, we're going to get that back, which, you know, if they would have known that right away, February would have come back right away. But we're going to do it so minimally over a period of time that it's not even, not even noticeable. So.
There is a motion to, uh, pay the lump sum based on the, uh, formula and the.
Yeah.
Strategy that Jason has, uh, indicated. It has been seconded by Councilor McMillan. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. Next up is a closed session, executive session for preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA seven five four three one ninety-six for a period of fifteen minutes. Open meeting will resume at the end of the executive session. Do I have a motion?
Ten minutes is fine.
Ten minutes. I'll modify the ten. Most of the ten is third second. Motion by Councilor McMillan. So, so by Councilor Adolf, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, same. Okay. Motion. We will go to closed session at eight twenty-eight, back at eight thirty-eight. Thank you very much. At this time, there's no, no formal action coming out of the executive session. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Councilor McMillan goes second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Beamer in discussion. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Motion passes. We are adjourned going into the work session. First up is the petition for the elimination of truck route on Elm Street. This is something we had discussed, what, about six, eight months ago?
Yeah, about, about a year.
About a year ago. And I know I personally also got a letter in the mail. I'm not sure if any other counselors also got letters in the mail, yeah, uh, with the signatures of the petition. If I remember correctly, one of the key concerns was the turn, uh, was a sharp angle coming out of one of the businesses and that's why we didn't take action a year ago.
I think it's actually one property owner. It's also not really a business, but it's a.
It's a guy that actually does trucking.
Drives a truck. Yeah.
So we had, we had that sharp angle that was the concern. Um, so I think, I guess.
I mean, I, I basically, I kind of put it on here more just to make sure you, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'll just solemnly admit, I just didn't get it done. I think it was one of those who said, hey, I weren't interested. It was fine. Here's a concern. I kind of need to talk to the property owner to make sure, yeah, we're going to have to basically go in. Oh, reconfigure their driveway a little bit to, so they could, if you look at it, well, you know.
First of all, does the petition require us, force us to.
No.
Don't, don't, just private.
It, it, so basically you see these driveways that are all going in this direction, you know, so it'd be, we'd have to make it so the radius could turn another direction. It may or may not require.
Well, it fills with water when it rains.
Probably.
It, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's how you come across the road.
Sure. Yeah. Again, I don't, I don't think it's major changes we'd have to do to it, but it's something we'd have to do. And, and, and I just, with everything going on last year, I just didn't get it done. So, um, my guess too, just probably you'd be rewarded to where it goes to Cedar Avenue, it goes to railroad tracks, because otherwise that guy is kind of boxed in. But I think it accomplishes the same thing and what they're asking for. But I don't want to go do all that if. I think it accomplishes the same thing and what they're asking for, but I don't wanna go do all that if we're not wanting to do it, you know, it's it's kind of like the, it's kind of like when we close this railroad thing, I mean, you get a little bit of comment. Now, again, it's been done, I don't think it's, I think everybody's used to it, it's fine.
If you put, if you put Cedar Avenue as a truck route, is that, is that quarter big enough for us to go, is there maybe some out-of-town trucker following truck routes?
Yeah.
Driving around that, thinking he's gonna be good, you know?
Well, you don't say anything at the railroad tracks, I, yeah, I'm I'm just saying, like, that's where it, basically, your truck route would extend to here, but this part wouldn't be a truck route, you know?
So the truck route would take them basically over the tracks and then they'd have to come in the other direction. Truck route, chill.
Yeah.
I can't remember how the word.
Currently, it jumps off twenty-fourth and Main Street.
Basically, this whole road is a truck route.
Main Street is also a truck route.
Back to that's Main Street, Asheville. Right, it would eliminate that, uh, they'd have to go around twenty-four, basically, is all it's gonna do.
Yeah, although he's talking about, so it's.
I don't change from cottonwood.
So right now, I have.
He was talking about ending it at Cedar, so that took a dead end with that property, yes. Dead ending, that's.
The way I proposed it was cotton, was cottonwood to Asheville. And then what Jason said was possibly going Cedar to Asheville.
Well, because if you got a guy with a truck here, it's gonna be kind of.
Right.
Oh, get caught on a technicality and people like, gee, nah.
So we probably.
It doesn't, it's just a small rail.
Yes.
Yeah.
As far as the safety issue, I can understand the concern of the residents, the truck and trailers going through that area. It's not really designed for the turn off of Main Street onto that street. So I I can appreciate it, and I I honestly don't think it's that big of an additional ask for a driver to go in that direction personally, but. I guess is the consensus of the council that we're good on this, or.
How many trucks?
I'm gonna say here that. Out-of-town truckers, and.
Are, I didn't think.
Out-of-town truckers, they'll, they'll, they'll see the truck route goes this way, they've never been here before.
Yeah, because it's on East Main Road, yeah.
You gotta take those signs out, they'll never go there, but. Harb, and it's.
Okay, Jerry.
Yeah.
I guess as A, for all all CVA.
Public, yeah, yeah.
What is, what is that?
We, I, either we talked about or I looked into to adding some of that, um. And essentially, we decided to to leave all that out, and this is just trying to.
Big old sprayer applicator coming out of CVA, headed down that road, and
I think.
It's a bigger hazard than a than a semi.
I think that was part of the discussion last time, it's like, you were picking up a whole man, I think it was ten of them, I just think.
And I don't know for sure, but I think we've been able to navigate some of that just with the businesses there. This is more for your out-of-town people following the Google map or something, or the signs with the semi-truck, is my understanding. I don't know that we're getting a lot of complaints, spray rigs.
I'm gonna use it in their letter, I think, but.
They did. But, I mean, we can sure add it in there, it's just not anywhere in our ordinance, it's not addressed at all for any of our truck routes. Or anywhere in our ordinance period. It is not addressed for public and trailer sprayers.
And it doesn't say that I'm necessarily truck.
So that would be almost amending our definition. So we, I think that was why I decided not to last time.
I mean, if you're just going by what they're requesting, they just ask for trucks, so.
There's a natural law with the sprayers, they're not gonna go down a small street. They know they can't fit.
Well, there's two cars in there, yeah.
And of course, you know, we can't just grade father him here, so he's already.
I thought the same thing. But.
Because if, I'm looking at that, the only, so one one individual, more than likely placed today, coming and going.
Right, that's.
It's not.
I don't know how you write that.
How much cost are we talking to curb that driveway?
I mean, I'm not thinking significant.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
It's gonna be probably, probably be frank, and it's not anything out of this person, but anybody that's experienced some change, it's probably just more the heartburn of the whole deal, you know what I mean, like?
It's just the boys in your front lawn.
Well, yeah, you're taking another, you're picking on here, you know, I'm just, again, it's not, I don't know this individual, but it's just, I mean, sure, anybody, you do a change, you know, it's tough.
Well, let me talk.
Yeah.
I thought about that, too, now we, uh, but that gets tricky. Eventually, we'll just have to look the other way.
Is he still driving?
I don't know.
I mean, I can't imagine that.
He was tired at one time.
I mean, that's part of it, I'm looking at it, say, even if.
I know, that's right.
It ain't like he's gonna be trucking for another twelve years.
It sold, it sold anything wrong, I don't, I didn't know if he got back to here.
Well, I can reach out to him, you know, I mean, maybe it won't even require it, or maybe it's not a moot point, you know, I, I don't know, I just, yeah.
I guess I'll just start with him, so he's just still running or driving, if he is.
He is driving, but he's not, he used to own his other truck, now he's leased on to somebody else, driving for somebody else. So, I mean, if you want me to skunk about it, you know, I gotta drive to work every day, why can't he drive to work every day? I mean, he parked his truck, that's being a pretty mixed gun.
Tony says.
I'd say let's.
I thought I suggested.
Yeah, I just need to approach it with, it just didn't happen last year, whatever, so it's by my fault, you mean, that's the petition, but we just didn't get it put to bed very well. Because it kind of is, I remember you and Tom, I talked on the side, but you know, kind of got to the same discussion. So it's sprayer detractors or not, or is it, you know, pickup, you know, one ton truck pulling, you know, the dual and hager's tanks down, or, you know, you know, because or if it's just strictly semi-trucks, that's fine, but then it's gotta stop there, you know what I mean? Because there's still gonna be, just like on my route, there's still common lines and stuff that go down my street, you know, it's, it's, I live in.
For work.
Cardboard. Because, but I understand their point, you know, I'm guessing this has always been a truck route, however, CVA nutrient have continued to add and build up out there, probably more than they were twenty or thirty years ago. I I don't know that for a fact, but I'm guessing there's more activity than there probably had there in the past, so I get the concern, so it wasn't like it used to be.
The only real hiccup I could potentially see is the trains. If the train is gonna be occupying some of those tracks, that route is now the.
For thirty minutes.
Right, that would be the only hiccup that I could really see, because I've seen those roads get shut down, because the guys coming through, fly out and stuff like that, but other than that, I don't really see.
That would only affect that one individual, right?
That's one, yeah, I I don't see any other major, um.
Maybe that's where you'd be the small-town, like, reasonable interpretation of law, that he's gotta sneak that way, or we understand it's just the one, you know, the say, they must sit there for an hour and I gotta get off the road. I, yeah.
Okay, if there's no further discussion at this time, we'll move on to Memorial Airport Spray Load Pad.
Alright. Uh.
Just basically a land transfer between.
Yeah, I mean, this is, again, just trying to keep you guys up to speed on what we've talked about over time, obviously, we talked about probably about a year ago, uh, or maybe six to nine months ago. Putting in some more stipulations for spray pilots and what we want, obviously, the long-term goal of the FBO, since I've been here, is to have anybody that sprays off of there to to utilize some sort of more of a permanent pad or base for spill prevention and and those types of things. What ends up happening out there is they load on the grass, and they try to do a good job of the end spilling and making, you know, not necessarily a mess, but it's just probably not the ideal situation. So in order to do that, you know, we have to have a location for them to to build those, so we've continued, continued to try to progress that down the road, but obviously, anything is difficult when you're dealing with the FAA. You know, we had our our ALP layout plan, so hopefully, it gives you some perspective, this Landall Building, this is Eighth Street. Uh, this is the existing hangars, and then kind of a layout of what future hangars may look like, obviously, this can all change, which just helps you with grant funding down the road, and where to put people, they wanna build a hangar out there. Uh, so, you know, this is where the grass runway is right now, it's fine if that closes down someday, but it's preferable to leave it open as long as possible. So is a spray pad really what you wanna use to close that down? Probably not. Where they spray at currently, it's probably borderline, not, uh, legal's not the right word, but borderline a bi- compliance issue or a violation issue due to height of like different tanks or even the planes themselves, because this airstrip, you just have to imagine from the, from the middle of that airstrip, this, which is where basically where this taxiway is showing, kind of a V, you know, kind of a a V out uh from there, so height restriction, you know, so things can only be so high. So if we put where where, you know, everybody's kind of spraying out of right now, right here, uh, that kind of gets into that uh area, so what this is requiring, what this is saying, so we'd have to close this grass strip, make some sort of a permanent spray base there, obviously, when these hangars happen, that's gonna happen anyways, but we're saying, hey, you know, those spray pads aren't the oh flashiest or, you know, most, uh, you know, the greatest development for an airport, so let's kind of tuck those away somewhere where they're not gonna impact, you know, the more premium spaces. Uh, but they also, you know, even even moving them back, you know, ten, fifteen feet makes a big difference in the scheme of things, so uh, kind of our proposition is to say, hey, let's let's swap some of this land, this commercial land is really what it is, that's what it's valued at, so that's why it's a different size. Uh, with some of this farmland, so obviously, Landall says, hey, we we wouldn't mind, in the future, who knows, expanding, but we'd wanna expand in the west. And obviously, this Kentucky way back here, we can still have hangars up here in the future. So that's a long story to say that there's a process to be able to do this. And of course, with the FAA, it's a lot of process, because even though the airport was privately purchased many, many, many years ago by, um, uh, I guess it's sports, right? Uh, you're.
Great, great.
Okay, um, uh, it's obviously still used FAA grant funding over the last, you know, several decades, so there's still some restrictions on it. So, uh, part of those restrictions is some sort of, I think, a once, what they call like a one sixty-three review. And then the other part is to do a, what they call like a yellow book appraisal, it's just a fancy type of appraisal. You gotta do a yellow book appraisal on both of those pieces, they wanna make sure that there's fair value in the exchange. You know, and it's not really an exchange, we would sell them for a dollar, and they would sell it to us for a dollar, but the values of them would say, hey, they're both worth, you know, fifteen thousand dollars or whatever it is, so. Um, yeah, Matt.
Um, we're, we're getting into what I think is a little bit of a conflict of interest, because in the FBO, uh, the the people doing the spraying and the business sufferer of that we're wanting to do is, Mayor works for nutrient, we have a nutrient spray plant, I go out there, I dig chemicals out there, there's competition with, um, our FBO, we're from CVA, and there's been conflict between those sprayers, and then you got Jamie Myers, works with Landall, we've got, we've got some. It seems to me we got some issues that we need to, I think, talk about.
Sure.
About, I mean, like, that's why we do this, so that we're not gonna be called favoritism.
Yeah.
Good old boys.
Well, that's, that's why you do this, this process, the yellow books review, you know, that's, that's not me, that's, that's required, but, you know, the FAA is the one that has to sign off on everything. So they have no stick in the deal. And actually, by doing the spray pads and making sure everybody's on the same playing field, it also gets away from some of this conflict that you're discussing right here, you know, that's been ongoing before.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I've got an extra grant one way.
No.
I can see how a third party looking at.
Sure.
To make an argument.
Yeah.
That they're being done wrong.
Sure.
Yeah, there's a lot of different parties involved, for sure.
It's not one.
Uh, the goal is to get every single entity that wants to spray up there on the same playing field. They pay, we're not billing the pads, we're just giving them the space. They build their own pad, they all have the same containment rules, they all have the same, and that's not what we have now. We have ones that are some, some are being allowed to park on the grass, and we gotta get away from that, it's, it's not.
Well, right.
And environmental wise.
You got heavier equipment, moving stuff on that grass, causing a run.
Well, exactly, and that's, you know, that's, I, second, we got, we got pictures from the FBO of discussing this issue, so, yeah, it's.
And the only space.
This is the only way I know how to deal with it.
We went over and over and over, what do we do? We don't wanna close a runway just for this purpose if we don't have to. And so this, this is what we're left with, we're just, we're so space limited out there, uh, that this is really it, so.
I think as long as we go through the proper channels and we go through all the proper steps, we can not that, not that you're trying to cover ourselves, but we will be documented of, here's what we filed legally to make this happen.
And we do, just so you know, auditing wise, Jamie, y'all have to report who you work for, did you do any contracts with the city, I mean, that's all on the table. So, you know, he probably won't vote on it, uh, it'll be reported to the auditors, if we did any contracts with any council members, things like that, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, I mean, honestly, it's, yeah, it's not even Jamie approaching me for it, it was, I actually, it just absolutely be a coincidence that he works there, yeah.
Right.
And I'm really honestly gonna be dealing with Don Landall, is really who it is, you know, that's who I'll be dealing with, but. Yeah, if anything, we're gonna require all these spray folks to actually spend money to spray our airport, you know, so it's not really much right now, it's kind of just a free-for-all.
Still have to build.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have a design of.
We're just, what I'm trying to do, and, yeah, you're right, it's just a weird coincidence, it happens to be all familiar names, which is really annoying. But it's like, I'm just trying to find a spot, which I'm super glad Landall's here, but man alive, why right there? For our airport, it just kills us, you know what I mean, like, and again, that's, that's not a knock, I mean, but just me alive really kills our, any sort of usable space, you know, so it's like, I'm just trying to find a scrap, you know, if if they weren't here. Build the pad right here, it's over, you know what I mean, like, it's a simple conversation, but before I go spending money on yellow book appraisals and some of those legal work, I I kind of wanna continue to move you guys, I mean, this is the same conversation that we've had now for about two or three years. Trying to, trying to get us to this point, so.
Well, and knock on wood, this is gonna, it'll all, it's gonna work out great, but I'm, I'm a veteran of the David Chase era.
Yeah.
And if he were to see this.
I know.
It would be.
I think, yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, and then you just have to ask him, so what's the conflict?
Yeah.
Because there's no, there's no, yeah, I mean, you're gonna have yellow book appraisals to cover your value exchange, and then you're asking, actually asking us to save money, then plus, like, so actually, to me, it's, it's reducing conflict.
And we're eliminating inequalities and.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly, everyone's gonna be at the same. I think you're, you're, it's a good point to bring up, actually, it is highlighting the issue out there, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's so far out of our, you know, it's basically just trying to find a space, and then as far as valuation or something, it's way outside of our hands at that point. But yellow book appraisals are probably about the total of four thousand dollars to do, so I didn't wanna go spend that without keeping you guys up to date on what's going on, so.
I think it makes sense to proceed on.
If anybody has questions or concerns or concept questions, please have a talk to me, because I can give them the whole spiel I live in every day.
Every day.
And I just wanted to get done, so, uh, I will gladly walk them through anything they can make through.
Is it pilots?
Device or email them once.
From the pilots, the guys spraying is the ones that has the problems or they?
No, it's just, you have entities that, basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get, and this is since twenty sixteen, I mean, I've got texts and emails from, saying, hey, we need to get everybody out loaded, as that's what we wanna see, so it's all, all the same. So that's what we're trying to get to, and it's just a ruckus, trying to, it's a bigger process than we anticipated to get to that point.
It's in the sheer.
And it's been, yeah, so it's, there's more interest than ever out there, so we're trying to get it to the point where everybody knows exactly what they gotta do, and here's where you gotta do that, you know, it's just, it's just a pain.
That way, if we have future pilots that wanna come in or entities, you say, okay, here's.
Yeah, here's the two spots.
Available, here's what you have to do, here to, and, because right now, when they come in, it's, it's a mess trying to figure out where they're gonna go and how they're gonna do it. We end up with what we have now.
Containment center pad out there.
Yeah, there'd actually be, there would be room for two of them.
Right.
So, yeah, yeah.
Both on full and.
And it's the one that's working out of there.
Right, so we have the one, and then there'll be two more, so we could have one for three.
Okay.
I mean, if you can't track.
Well, yes, sorry.
That's why the red box is a proposed, like, look pad.
The proposed location for it.
There'll be two of them in that space.
You know, these little pads would be like, you know, fifty by fifty or sixty by sixty, you know, I mean, the space is probably a hundred by three hundred, you know, but you get room for maneuvering in there and whatever else, you know?
Getting the vehicle in.
Getting the vehicle, yeah, so.
Any further discussion or we can move on? Okay, hopefully, the last one's an easier one, direct to the solid waste RFP. Can you make it quick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, okay, so it's that wonderful time of year, uh, no, it's been five years roughly since we, uh, started the had to re, what do I say, put out a new request, uh, request.
Cars, yeah.
Uh, for the solid waste, so, uh, that'll be due, or it's gonna be a new contract on January first, so I figured we need to start that process to get that out there. Uh, Katie worked on this, hopefully, they've had a chance to review it, trying to, you know, probably clarify and strengthen the language a little bit. Um, you know, I think at the time, we kind of had some, I was just kind of set the table for some of the thoughts that were going on at the time, you know, some, 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 some ideas, hey, we could, you know, do citywide recycling, or do not, or whatever. You know, the more that I've been here, the longer I've been here, and trying to get an idea of what's going on, and get a finish community where we're a really great recycling community, and there was really good act. You know, the more that I've been here, the longer I've been here, trying to get an idea of what's going on and get, I think, we, where we're really great recycling community, and there's really good access to it. Um, you know, my thoughts would probably be to leave it fairly status quo, you know, there's two active picking up agencies that'll pick it up for you, that you can go get it if that's what you wanna do. And then there's one, you know, O C K where you can actually drop it off, and, and if you look at a lot of small communities in our area, especially the more, more our size world communities, you know, you're looking at your, oh, Contoria's or Russell or whatever else, you know, a lot of those are just, they'll have a trailer somewhere. You can just go dump it in or whatever else, because, um, you know, in my previous community, we had really good access to the recycling, and it, it actually probably controlled our costs, you know, because it took it out of the tonnage. And here, what I'm afraid of is you're gonna end up, you know, it's fifteen bucks, well, if you want everybody, your second one out is twenty-two dollars, you know, and that's gonna get to be burdensome on folks that may or may not, and then what do you do about containers? Who places that and all those types of things, so, um, the more I, I talked about internally and talked about with Katie, you know, we thought, hey, let's just, you know, what's working is, is working pretty well, we have an actual tonnage, they report tonnage once a month to us, so it's not every day or every, or every, sorry, every week, but it's just trying to get a snapshot, so we have a pretty good trend line. Of, of how much tonnage that we have, so that should give, all, you know, the contractors bidding on it, a lot better idea of what to bid, you know, I think that's what we ran into last time, once there was a lot of unknowns, uh, cause that was really never tracked before, uh, if you remember this transition from, uh.
There, well, there was some games in the chip going on.
Well.
Between some of the competitors saying, well, I don't see how that person can stay in business.
Yeah, and I, and yeah, exactly, so that, that, exactly, so that was just, the intention was to get rid of that, and again, so we have good bids, you know, so both of them can bid appropriately, cause before, I think it was just a countywide contract, so it was just kind of, all the cash got picked up and I wasn't quite sure how much was in each city.
There was a lot of transitional stuff going on at the time.
Yeah.
Basically, it was basically us being told, hey, we're ending this.
Yes.
Figure out what we were gonna get.
It was, it was not, it was not a good situation for anyone, the, the, the existing trash contract.
How does that contract work out? We had to do any adjustments to that contract since we did it?
We did it in December of twenty sixteen, starting January first twenty seventeen, we have done zero changes, it has worked.
And as a city, we're happy with the service we've been getting from them, we've got five years now of data of weights from them, which they were required to give to us. Um, we haven't had to do, do adjustments for fuel costs, we've kept the cost the same for five years.
So what will happen is this ordinance, sorry, this, this RFP will go out, and again, it has some same, some of the same language as well, I mean, we do have some search language for fuel costs and that stuff.
I did up the insurance, I mean, there's things like that for, that I, insurance, I have two million, things like, but it's all in there.
But the RFP would go out, the, the trash tonnage, some sort of a spreadsheet would go out with it, and also the ordinance would go out with it. And we're gonna really strongly encourage it to really read that, cause that's what happened last time too, it was like, well, you know, you allow grass, or they didn't, or this, I mean, what says in the ordinance is what we'll pick up, you know what I mean? So that way, it's none of this, you know, you know, I thought you were gonna include this or not, or we did this, or we didn't, you know, so, uh, just wanna make it really just hopefully a straight up.
Are we, are we moving to the trash can thing that you were talking about, you were talking about in the future, we might get it where, buy everybody a trash can?
No, again, we haven't, no, you know, and again, that's, that's stuff that, tho- those are really big changes that, you know, you have to have, frankly, an appetite for, and that's something that. We have, have our tonnage increased slightly over the five year period, yes, you know, our tonnage has increased, because we have no caps on the size of your trash can or the number of trash, really, we don't, you know? Many communities, mine included, it was, uh, one or two, I can't remember anymore, but you know, one, like hefty size, you know, it's your normal trash can, not the monster one, but kind of a normal size, that was what you got. If you wanted more, you had to go buy a ticket, a city hall, you know, a tag, a city hall, that's your five bucks, and you can put out what you want, you just have to buy tags for it, that's how you control that, while we kind of don't, now, we'll, if I like it, but that might be.
Have we had any issues though that would cause us to say we need to change to a, a regulated?
The only way, the only issue is gonna be what this bid is.
Yeah.
You know, if this bid comes in and they see that tonnage now, and they say, hey, it needs to be twenty-two bucks, the only way you're gonna keep that from continuing to go on, you know, five year after five years, is to say, hey, it's gotta, you know, you get two fifty-five gallon, whatever it is, you know, thirty-five gallon, uh, trash containers max. And, cause the other issue typically in a city, we don't really have it in here, is how much they weigh. And you think about that for, the people have to pick it up, you know what I mean, like, it's our, you know, it, it's still a guess, but you know, and again, we had kind of a, a weight limit, because hate to have, you know, a hundred thousand books in there, that's really hard on people's backs and everything else, so. We don't really have that in there either, you know, but it's working and there's no real complaints about it, but. Those, those are things that, that's how you cost control some of that stuff, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, are we gonna have to change that yet, because the trucks are all gonna have the automatic, we don't right now, I don't think we're ready for that as a city.
I think it's good the way it is, I think, honestly, I haven't heard any complaints about the service, and if those who want recycling, like you say, they either come every first and third Saturday and do it themselves, or else they contract their wife or other with Dunston to do it. And I don't think, I don't believe we're at a point as a community that we need to institute mandatory recycling or put a recycling program into our bid, so.
Yeah, I think everybody else has comments, whatever, yeah, it's kind of what we're here for, so we know when we, I don't know, when do we think, Katie, for a timeline, get it out sometime, August or something.
I have one here, uh, they got it back by the end of August, so I think we were thinking August first.
Like a thirty day, roughly.
Yeah, and they'll negotiate, do the contract at the summer. Doesn't have to be August.
Sometimes, sometimes in September, October will be a room. I think going into this, exactly, I guess, it's kind of just like, boom, here you gotta figure this out, it's kind of a mess, obviously, it's, nobody's enjoying that, and, uh, so this title will be, will clear our RFP or data for them.
I think there was also an expectation coming out of what was, had been there previously, that there was an expectation of continuing our service, and that was not.
Well, I, I was there, but it felt to me like the, the existing company was trying to get a raise.
Oh, yeah, I was there too, I mean, we were, and, yeah, I agree.
Most interesting, what I've been.
Yeah.
How they're free it is.
They've been waiting, I think there's no way they can know what they're talking about, I, I, I mean, there was a lot of questions.
The whole thing was just, yeah.
But.
It'll be more black and white.
Nobody was in a good situation.
No, it was a very.
Or us, no.
They do have to, this, they will, and it will say in the contract, they have to use Central County Land Bill. We're not gonna go through that mess, we'll, they gotta take it here, so.
This is where the bid process.
Yes.
Worked, uh, yeah. Okay, uh, is there anything else before we call it a night? If not, thank you very much, glad Tom's doing okay, we'll be back.